It's the Star City Council Joint Regular Committee meeting for Thursday, February 7th, Members Mark McKeever, Kevin Meyer, Dave Wireball, Bruce Trupick is absent, Monica Stack, Doug Oak, and Andrew Schock. I called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Is there any public participation? Yes?
Yes, hi.
Just go up and send the phone in there, make sure your name and address. First floor.
Good evening, council. My name is John Rucker. I am with AEP Ohio. I am a community and customer experience account manager for AEP. I'm joined tonight by Chris Jackler, who is the customer service representative, who covers the city of Bucyrus for AEP Ohio. During this segment of your meeting, I want to introduce smart meters, which we call AMI smart meters, which are going to be installed in the Bucyrus area. Actually, a little bit of the urgency of this presentation is off a little bit because a few months ago, I talked to the mayor and Jeff Wagner, and we were scheduled to be installing the new smart meters mid to late February, and that's actually been pushed off to this early summer. But it's still good to let council know that this is coming. They are still definitely coming, but just to let you know, the schedule's been altered a little bit. But I just want to give you a quick overview of smart meters and what these will mean for the citizens of Bucyrus. So if you go to that packet there, what does a smart meter do? One of the benefits is it helps with outage restoration by improving the response times. Customers no longer have to call in for an outage. The network system will identify where we have outage at that, so it will increase, improve our response time for outages. It eliminates the need to access the property to read the meters because it's all done electronically. It will simplify the billing process for our customers by eliminating estimated bills, and it also allows every customer that is so inclined to become energy managers. And I'll show you a little bit more about that. We'll talk a little more about that in a second. But how AEP is going to notify customers, they'll receive a mail or two weeks prior to the installation. They'll also receive an automated phone call about 10 days prior to the installation that the smart meter will be installed at their home. The day of installation, they'll receive a door hanger, and then 12 weeks after the installation, they'll receive a postcard from AEP Ohio that will explain some of the benefits. So a little bit about the Bucyrus installation schedule on the next page. For the residential customers, these are now scheduled again. It's been pushed back because the reason I'm here tonight, one of the reasons, is we thought they were going to originally be installed late February in Bucyrus, but now it's been pushed to late June, mid-July this summer. But actually, our meter electricians are already installing the smart meters for commercial customers in the area. So 6,100 meters will be replaced in the Bucyrus area. These will be done through a contractor by the name of McClara. So they'll have a fleet of light vans, they'll have reflective vests, and they will be identifying themselves as they install all the smart meters across the city. The next page, what the smart meters allow customers to do. This is an example. Once the meter is installed, they have the opportunity to download on their smartphone, if they have a smartphone, an app called It's Your Power. And when they do that, they'll get a live reading of their energy consumption at their home. Once they download the It's Your Power app, that'll register them for a free energy bridge, and the energy bridge will be delivered free of charge to their home, and they can basically network their major appliances, their thermostat system, and control all of it through their smartphone. So again, nobody's required to do that, but if somebody wants to turn into a personal energy manager for their home or their business, they will have the technology to do so. So some of the benefits, again, it'll give customers insight into when they're using the electricity, what appliances use the most electricity in their home, and they can actually, again, through the app and the energy bridge, control how much energy is used. Few more features of that with the pictures there of the smartphone. That's really, in a nutshell, AMI smart meters, and that, again, I don't know, will be coming to Bucyrus customers here this summer. Any questions? Yes, sir.
You did say that the bridge unit, if you sign up for the app after this is already installed and everything, that is all free?
Yes.
So with the bridge system, I guess, how does that work with your appliances? Does that give you the ability to turn the power off to certain appliances at certain times of the day, or how does that work?
My understanding is with the energy bridge, there's an additional step if you want to network all your appliances. My understanding, and I haven't done this yet at my own home, but I did get my energy bridge about three or four days ago, and it does, and alls I did was, you know, register through the app. My understanding is at the major big box home improvement stores, Lowe's, Marts, those, Home Depot, there is an adapter that you can plug into your outlet. So for example, your refrigerator, wherever, whatever outlet your refrigerator's in, if you then plug that into that plug, then that transmits the usage data through energy bridge. So there is an additional step beside wiring up, installing the energy bridge, if you want to network your appliances. And again, that is through the outlet you have to buy. It's not an outlet that you have to rewire.
Right.
It's a plug-in for your-
It's an adapter.
An adapter.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the next step, to my understanding.
Okay.
I still have to do it at my house.
John?
Yes, sir.
This is, just to reiterate, this is done at no cost to the homeowner.
Correct.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions. Any studies done on the amount, you know, the added E and Ls coming out of these? This is what I've heard. You know, through out?
No, valid question. I'm not here to quote any studies because I haven't, I don't know them, but I have heard that the amount of, you know, for one thing, the AMI meter is mounted up, you know, on your meter box, so it's external to your home, but it's a small fraction. The radio frequency waves are emitted by the AMI smart meter are a small fraction of our cell phones and the other electronic equipment we have in our homes. So compared to cellular everything else-
It's still the same as everything else, right?
Well, that could be, but I know it's a much, much smaller amount of radio waves from what I've been informed.
Yeah, and then the other thing is that I've seen where these have caught fire, some of these, especially like on an apartment building where you have like a big bank of them and things like that.
I've heard those stories, but I know, I mean, they've been installed, this is phase two for AEP, and they've had several thousand installed in the Columbus area already for 10 years, and I can say they're not concerned of the safety implications. A lot of the, a lot of electric co-ops have digital smart meters already installed in Ohio, and again, I've heard of the same stories, but I know as far as AEP's concerned, it's not a, the fire hazard isn't a safety issue for us.
And I guess, the last one is, there's no way you cannot have one of these?
We are strongly, we are strongly encouraging all of our customers to have them. If somebody is adamant, there is an opt-out feature. There is an opt-out opportunity, but it actually will cost the customer a little more per month because we're going to have to physically send the meter reader out to your premise to still read your meter. But yes, there is an opt-out opportunity.
Okay, I'm good, John.
One last question.
Yes?
For people that have fenced-in yards where the meter would be on the back of the house inside the fenced-in yard, is there going to be any issues if they're not home during the daytime hours when these guys are coming by to replace these meters?
Well, I know that if they have a, if their meter is already fenced in, we should already have arrangements for getting access. I haven't heard of that exact issue, but I know, I mean, we're going to be in that neighborhood for, you know, in Bucyrus areas for several weeks, and I assume, Chris, do you know if they, any idea if they make extra arrangements?
I would think they'd leave a door hanger. Look, try to make phone calls or leave messages.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
There will be, there will be an effort made, yeah. We're not going to leave anybody out because we can't, they aren't home that same day. I mean, the idea is, the network needs to work in its entirety, and there will be additional efforts to make sure we can get a hold of them.
Just want to make sure about your experience.
When you install this, is there a service interruption to the house, and how long is that?
It takes, yes. There is about a two to three minute service interruption. So that is the process.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you?
Yes.
With the new smart meters, will there still be a digital readout that the customer can see to read the usage?
Yes, yes. It does, it does give you the kilowatt hour usage on the digital display.
I think that gentleman has a question.
Yeah, I have a series of questions.
Okay, maybe if you could give us your name and-
Okay, that's fine. Paul Davis, 1251 Ohio Drive. Okay. You addressed the fire issue. As far as how is that related to power surges and stuff that I've read, as far as when they do change that meter out, they're changing it out hot. And sometimes the surge from the changing out has a potential of causing a problem of house fires.
I have no knowledge of that.
Okay, well, I've been reading stuff about it all across the country. Okay, another one, if I may, I have 15 of them.
15, okay.
Okay, you discussed as far as monthly fee for having a smart meter, or you didn't discuss a, is there a fee?
No, not for the smart meter.
Okay, some areas do have fees.
No additional fee.
Okay. Are the meters going to be used as peak meters or demand meters?
No.
They are not.
That's correct, Chris. Chris is helping me out because he has more expertise.
It has a demand display on it, but it's not billed residentially, no?
Okay, because some areas, some villages and stuff are using it as demand meters. I'm going to quote DTE as far as, out of Michigan is notorious right now.
Okay. But your tariff, the tariff will not change, your current tariff as a residential customer will not change under the smart meter?
All right, that's what I was concerned about, as far as high usage between 4 and 8 o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
And is that going to be split and split rate is what I was concerned about?
No.
All right. Split rate, I see. It combines here. If you choose to opt out, will it still stay as an analog meter, or where are you going to be putting like a dumb meter at?
It will be a digital meter. It will not be networked. So it will not be the analog, the analog meters a lot of citizens now have. It'll be a, it'll be a digital, but it won't be linked and networked.
Things I've read has been complaints of accuracy on these digital meters.
From everything we have been told, they are much more accurate than, you know, the current analog meters. To a, and we test them. If somebody has questions, they can be tested, but they are sporadically tested from, in the phase one. And it's 99% plus accuracy over, of the testing.
All right, next question. How do these meters connect to the neighborhood meters? Does it hop off one meter to the next one, or?
Yeah. It is the, the need, the, I'm not an engineer, but they are, they are linked in a network. And you have so many, you know, for example, in a neighborhood, you'll have so many that are communicating data from one to the other, and then they are, then they communicate their data or transmit their data to a relay on top of a power pole in the city. I'm not certain of this, but for example, there may be five to six relay units mounted for the city of Bucyrus. So, you know, that many neighborhoods will communicate individually and then transmit to that relay, and then that relay, the relays will then go to a central point for the data collection.
Is there any way of any of that stuff getting, the signals getting crossed or anything, or is all the digital, I mean-
To my understanding, no. We believe it works very well because it is proven technology. But yeah, good question, they are networked.
Okay, what happens, you're not saying it is a demand meter, so the other question was, as far as what happens when you have a weak signal or whatever, as far as your transition or whatever, your Wi-Fi system, like we have in our own home, and what happens as far as weak signals?
It's not, they're not on like a Verizon signal by themselves, so that's why not everybody is, the signals are, the system is designed that the signal stays strong enough to transmit the data. So that's why right now rural areas aren't being networked together, and why we're only really looking at clustered areas within larger municipalities. And that doesn't really answer your question, but there is a lot of, I know, thought and engineering into the networks, so I'm hoping that they've designed it where the signals aren't weak enough to cause a problem.
Okay, going back as far as the rates and that kind of stuff. Right now, you're saying no split rates, but is that potential in the future?
It would have to be, it would have to be approved by the PUCO if we were doing any kind of rate change. So I'm not going to promise never, but it would be very difficult to achieve, I would say that. And AEP couldn't do it on its own, it would have to be cleared through the PUCO.
All right. The meters tracking your personal data, as far as who are you going to be signing to, and is it going to be without permission?
No. To my, from everything I've been told, that is, that is not going to happen. And again, it's, there's no case of it happening in the ones that have been installed in Columbus area for 10 years already.
Okay. Those goes as far as into the theory of invasion of privacy, retrieving data without a warrant, as far as high usage or whatever.
I can't comment on that because I have not heard that.
Okay.
But don't you do that, do, don't you get, I heard someone still goes extremely high because basically what you're saying-
Right.
-because they're in there growing.
Yes.
I think that's what you're getting at.
I'm getting at that as far as, but-
Yeah.
But-
That's what somebody told me. But, but don't you, doesn't that throw a flag out to you somewhere? Even now with analog meters, haven't you done that for years?
Right, I mean, when we, when we see, we have a high bill complaint, we see high bill issues, we bring those things to the customer's attention. So it really shouldn't be any different than what our current data, we already currently know our provider customers. It'll be more timely, but you know, the opportu, the opportunity should not change for us to utilize that data, and to my knowledge, we are not.
Okay. Hacking as far as stealing electricity or your, goes back to privacy, your usage, usage knowledge as far as where somebody can hack into it and know that you're not at home, where you would be broken into. That data is out in the wavelengths now.
Yeah, I haven't thought of that. I mean, somebody could, it wouldn't be any different than walking up to the back of your home and seeing that it's even getting-
Well, I realize that, but this is easy because they're going through and picking off a Wi-Fi signal.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I haven't heard of that concern yet.
Okay. What is your opt-out fee as far as monthly?
I believe, and again, it's, I think it's $23.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Thank you, Chris. All right. Yes.
Because I pulled that up off, off your website.
All right.
All right. You already explained as far as you're going to be doing two weeks as far as notice as far as written, 10 days.
Yep.
Okay, as far as, that I want to find out. If you choose to, you already have the smart meter, and you want to go back to analog or a dumb meter?
Right. If you opt out, you'd be going to, it would, it would still be an electronic meter, not a normal-
Okay, I mean, as far as you already had the smart meter installed, you want to go back to a dumb meter?
Okay.
Am I correct, as far as, I think it's a $40, $43 fee?
If, I think to change one out, yes.
Okay.
Yes, there will be an additional disconnect, reconnect fee for that.
All right. This is going by other utility companies, I'm not saying you.
Yeah.
Are you planning to penalize customers who opt out of installing a smart meter in a form of bullying? There have been different utilities that are already bullying their customers.
From what I understand, it's a confidential feature. We have customers, we have customers that I know have opted out in one of the communities in our district already. There's been no, there's been no social media recognition of that whatsoever.
Okay, because there has been as far as other places.
Okay.
Forms of harassing.
I know Chris and I are going to.
All right. I have even record here as far as DTE, I'm referring to them. Show off customers' power because they refused to use a smart meter.
Yeah. You have the option of opting out?
Well, they opt out, and they still turn around and pulled the meters and put a digital, put the smart meter in.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you.
We appreciate our customers, you know, we want you to keep paying. We want the money to keep the company.
Well, I'm just saying, as far as, I was reviewing as far as California, North Carolina, Michigan, Indiana, different states, that are already having these issues.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think we got another question open?
Yes, sir.
Kurt Fankhauser. I know you're going to be changing the residential out in the summer, but you know the, like an infrared quartz space heater, that it says you shouldn't unplug those while they're turned on? Like if you shut it off, you hit the off button, and then the fan keeps running, so it blows the heat out. If you turn the power off for two or three minutes, like I know you said you're already doing the commercial buildings in this area, which they have done the one on my building here in the last week. If you have one of those infrared space heaters that you're not supposed to shut the power off to them without them shutting down and the fan running for a couple of minutes, that could be a situation where the fire hazard is present.
When we actually change out the meter?
Yeah, when you get the two or three minute now.
Right.
I don't know if you've thought of that, or, I'm glad the fire department's here because they could potentially have to go out to one of those.
Okay. All right. We can share that with the, with the smart grid team. Again, I don't think Chris and I have heard of that being an issue, but we can definitely share that.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What brand? You got a brand?
Well, like the Eden Pure ones.
I'm just curious, because I actually have one, and I, many a times, I have turned it off, fan still running, unplugged it from the wall, left it sit in my bedroom all day, never had it plugged in.
Yeah, but if, I mean, it'll get a little bit hotter if you unplug it.
I'm just asking. I mean, that's why I'm asking. Was it a certain rate in, or?
You're installing these in the summer, right?
Yes.
What would somebody be using a space heater for this summer?
Well, they're doing commercial ones now.
Yeah. Commercial ones would affect them.
But this is the summer, the summer use, okay.
But the commercial ones are being done by AEP meter electricians, you know, because a lot of them are three-phase, meters for three-phase power and things like that, so it's a different process. The three or four, or two or three minute outage with McClara are on residential. Yeah, and maybe will be done this summer, so that's good. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Any other public participation? Okay. Does it order a committee business? Iowa Home Service Committee meeting to order at 6:26. 6:26. AEP agreement. Come on, turn it back to the House.
All right. What I'm presenting tonight, definitely not asking for council's action tonight, but would like to request the renewal of the franchise agreement between the city of Bucyrus and AEP Ohio, or as we're referred to in the franchise agreement is the Ohio Power Company. Requesting a renewal of the 50-year franchise agreement. Last one was signed March 1969. I'm not an attorney, but this, you know, this is a legal agreement, but it's fairly straightforward, page and a half agreement. Really, the two biggest points of it is, the franchise agreement gives AEP Ohio the right to conduct its work, repair its lines, maintain its lines in the city's right-of-way. So the public areas of the right-of-way, the agreement gives us the right to do that without the need for permits and pre-approval and things like that. The second important thing that the franchise agreement does is it holds the city harmless if anyone gets hurt or injured on AEP's equipment in the city. So those are the two major legal points that are covered in the franchise agreement. AEP Ohio has one with every municipality that it serves in the state of Ohio, so these are very standard, and just ask for council's consideration of the franchise.
Law director? Any comments on that?
No, I mean, these are, these are state agreements, the state provides our advice for a franchise process.
So I guess my question then is, should we go ahead and ask for legislation, or should we wait? I guess I'm asking the committee.
Well, we need electricity, and your options are, yeah, I mean, your options-
Should we stop around?
Where your options are, yeah, you can open your open meeting list where you tell the, you know, guy in the story that had a 15, although they're George George-
No, I mean, should we do that now, or should we wait?
It depends on if you have any other questions. There's no reason to wait, but.
Okay. I guess that was, is there a reason to wait?
And I would add, the franchise agreement is not exclusive. The, a city or municipality is free to sign them with other, with other providers, but I just want to point that out as well.
Okay. This is the vote makes motion to continue that we're going to do this another 50 years or not?
No, it's up to you.
I'll make a motion, request legislation and do this agreement for another 50 years.
Hopefully by 50 years, Chris, it'll be-
Is that the standard term for these agreements now, for another 50 years though?
It, there are a lot of options. Some municipalities sign them for 10 years, some have done them for 20 years. I, we had, you know, Bucyrus was under the 50 years, so that's the way we drafted, drafted this one. And, and there is, there is a- And, and there is, there is a, I mean, we can, it can be voided with a one-year, a one-year notice. So it's a fifty-year agreement, but it, it, it can be voided after the one-year notice, so.
I guess I would ask if there's any objection in terms of the duration of the, of the agreement on the law director before we just?
I, I have no objection to the fifty-year, I mean, it's solely your discretion and that they're willing to agree to it, but you may pay in quarters, maybe nine, whatever you like.
Fifty years out, that's a worry.
So I'll second Doug's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
So that will move on to, uh this is what we do every year.
Yes.
Just go out and get pricing out of that.
Yeah, we, it starts April first, but we usually try to get out now. We like to see the new pricing for the upcoming year, in case we need to buy some stuff in now or we wait and maybe we have some luxo and it goes down, so if you look at the first page there under water filtration, we removed a couple items that you no longer need to go out and get priced for. And then if you go to B, underwater distribution and you flip the page, you go to item twenty-three through thirty-seven, these are items that we've been using to expand our water line when we work in conjunction with the contractors, so we'd like to get some pricing for those items as well. And then on page four, our street materials, whether it's hole patch, hot patch, stone, concrete, those are all the same items that we've always been out and got a price for before.
So we're actually not buying anything?
Nope, just going out to get pricing.
Giving them permission to go out?
Yep, the contractor did to get pricing.
Give them best price.
And then that'll hold from April first to March thirty-first to March thirtieth of the next year.
Okay. Under team motion, who says four?
Yes, I guess.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's what we're doing, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Um, Mr. Ricker and Decker, if you wanted to leave, feel free.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Chris.
Same thing, thanks, Lon. So it's, uh, why is this down here?
It's thirty-two.
And we'll, uh start pumping lanes and buildings at six thirty-two. And talk about the two thousand nineteen millon page, never too early to start payment streets.
Nope. As soon as we get out, hopefully the better price we get. I think all in front of you have the preliminary cost estimate from Branstad or Carroll. Standard milling and pave, nothing out of the ordinary other than, you know, adjusting catch basins and water valves and things like that, basically just the milling and pave on these streets that we have listed. And if you go down to the total, when they added in the contingency, we actually ended up over the six hundred thousand dollar mark. So, um we could take like, item number eight, Arch Drive and make it as an alternate. But I will tell you, and Joyce can confirm this, but ninety-five percent of the time, or ninety-nine percent of the time, we're coming in under budget with usually whoever has our does our milling and paving. And usually it's Chuck Kimberline, but usually we come in under budget. So with the ten percent, we're actually over. So I can list one as an alternate, so we can see where we come in at, so we make sure we stay under our budget. If you want me to do it that way, then number twelve, the Arrowhead, in our budget, our share was two thirty and actually came in at two ten. So that's a twenty thousand dollar decrease of the cost to save. So if you guys just want to give me your thoughts on, you know, you want me to take number eight and make it an alternate? To make sure we stay under that six hundred thousand? I guess I'm just asking if you've got any concern, if you want us to do it.
I guess that would be the, would be the worst last, if they could do, take one. But also could leave some in there in case we had something like the square, that one in there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, just in case we need something somewhere else.
Yeah.
And I think I had a request to look at Taylor Avenue. And we did take a look at that, and we think we can just do some cutting and patching on our own to get by till next year for that.
Ballin' Baylor?
Yeah, from Oakwood.
I know I've asked you and I think you answered me, but I forget which one you told me.
North.
The third or nine hundred block?
Nine hundred. That's where we're doing part of our sewer separation.
That's right.
And that street isn't gonna be made for equipment, so by the time they get done going up and down that dig in the trench, it's probably gonna be as thick as it is.
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to do like he said, to put Arch Drive number eight, you know, as an alternate. Just to be on the safe side. But if it comes in under, well, under budget, that the three, four thousand isn't gonna affect it, then they can put it right back in.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think that would be a good thing. Okay, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to, uh if we have to ask for legislation for this? To, uh
Yep, to go out to bid.
To go out to bid for these, with Arch Drive being the alternate.
So moved. Seconds. I kind of wanted to first do and then.
Wearing too many hats tonight. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed? So with that, uh and at six thirty-six, what kind of public lanes to build?
I will call the fighting to order six thirty-six. This is for changing the zoning coordinates to area of South Poplar and South Walnut between Charles and Oakwood that is adjacent to Sandusky. So I'll ask for zoning, as you're here, to give us some information.
Okay, um, yeah, so as Mark just pointed out there, what we're talking about, and I believe Todd provided you guys with the packet that I'm working at here. You can see how the current zoning stands. And what the expansion will do is expand it to west from the alley west of Sandusky to Poplar and east from the alley east of Sandusky to Walnut. As far as the rest of the packet, you have there the permitted uses and the conditional uses that are, that are permitted in the neighborhood business district. So you have a good idea of what kind of things are permitted should, should the change take place. You also have the development standards there, which some of those I would like to point out here in a couple seconds. And then finally, I just put others into considerations. The main one being that residences and as Mr. Myers pointed out earlier, any use that's in there now will be grandfathered in moving forward past the change. So there's, no one's going to get shut out of their house and they can't use it as a residence anymore. Should they fall into discontinuance after a vacancy of a period of two or more years? They can simply apply for a conditional use with the Board of Zoning Appeals. A hearing of that nature takes about a month and the decision would likely be rendered in most cases. Things for you guys to consider would just be the impact of the characteristics of the neighborhoods on the opposite sides of Poplar and Walnut. Increase in traffic, increase in noise, that type of thing. Personally, I, I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other, but I would like to point out that the advantage of doing it this way is if a business would like to expand from its current position on Sandusky Avenue in either direction, this would make it so they do not have to go through the process of, of changing the zoning, which will save them three, four, five, how many months that process takes when the timelines match up. I would say the advantage of keeping it as it is, is if they would like to change that zoning and they, you know, buy the three parcels or whatever, and we extend it over to the east and then on opposite sides, there would still be residential districts in that case. If you look at your development standards, you can see on items E, F, and K, there are additional safeguards for adjacent residential properties when they abut to the neighborhood district, which would include a larger side yard setback, a larger rear, rear yard setback, and if those side yards or rear yards are adjacent to any residential property, then they would have to be landscaped and screened accordingly. So although any new development, new use would have to submit to the Planning Commission in either instance, I, I feel that we have a little bit more control if we keep it the way it is, but again, that's weighed against the businesses, you know, not having to go through the whole process of changing the zoning.
Just a quick question, under the million five fifteen mile street. You said the current zoning is Sandusky Avenue to the alleys parallel?
Correct.
And it will extend east and west to Walnut Street and Poplar?
Correct.
When it goes to Walnut Street and Poplar, is it only the east side of Poplar Street or is it also the west side of Poplar?
East side of Poplar Street, west side of Walnut.
And it would be?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there a business already looking at going into these areas right now?
The reason reason this is being brought up is what happened across the street here.
And Tim Hortons.
We had to go through, where it took time out of their budget to put that in because they had to buy land over there because they were gonna make it bigger and there was gonna be a second business in there. That, and this, by doing this, this can, in my opinion, make it better for the potential landowners there. If they want to sell to a business, they can offer that to them without going through the red tape. Like he also said, the setbacks on the side yard, rear yards and landscaping is like they did over here, or Tim Hortons, they did put that fence up. The privacy, they do have the lights that are not way high, that they're directional. I'm just saying, this can make it better. On the increase of traffic, I really don't think it's gonna really increase the difference on Walnut and Poplar because I live on Poplar and I know how busy that road is no matter what. So it's not really gonna change more traffic, in my opinion.
But my concern was for the residents.
That's correct.
As far as, that's why I'm asking, is there something else already looking at this, why it's being moved, going right now?
We had a customer who was interested in buying the Dropworks building.
Correct.
Which was on this side of the alley, on Sandusky side alley. But if they needed to expand, they would have had to gone through a whole series of trying to get a parking lot on the other side of the alley, because that's residential.
Correct.
So that's part of the reason, and that could help the other companies that may want to sell.
How far south are you going all the way?
Only, only from Oakwood to Chappaqua.
Because I used to live on Walnut Street years ago, so currently you didn't.
Correct. Alright. I like it. I think what brought it to light, at least in my mind, was we did the Tim Hortons thing and then, and then, uh
True Value.
True Value, and it was, bam, bam, every time we turned around, we're having one of these and it takes, you know, it takes a few months to do that, and I'm thinking, if we just keep continuing to do this, then we have to have the special meetings and
I understand that.
And, and it, plus, it, it makes it maybe more, more
Business friendly?
Business friendly, yeah. So, that, that was the only reason, I don't think there's really any businesses that I know.
And then that's, that's where I'm at with it, if if you want to put a business here and you're looking, you're trying to narrow it down between here and some other town. And we've got ten more steps for those in our future, and another ten dozen, we're gonna lose out.
Correct.
We want to be more business friendly, we want to attract people here. And so I did, I went and spoke with Land in the day and I asked, you know, the pointed question, you know, with that in mind, what are the negatives, and you kind of already alluded to that. The really only negative is that we lose a little bit of control for specific use, but everything is all spelled out.
We lose a little bit of control and we lose a little bit of those protections that are meant for neighboring residential areas because it will all be considered the neighborhood business district at that point. Those are, are the major things that would be the negative. But like I said, any new development or any new proposed use that would go in is required to submit a development plan to the Planning Commission, which would have to address parking, signage, any of those things that might affect the area.
They still have hoops to jump through, but not as complicated. And, and lengthy, and costly to us also. Every time we do a public hearing, it costs us money.
Well, I understand that, I don't even go through zoning for sixteen inches.
So, alright, anybody else have any questions? Alright. Anybody that would like to entertain a motion to bring this to a public hearing? Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bring that to a public hearing.
We will, we need to schedule a date now, about thirty days, keep in mind that we need to have time to draft legislation, to draft legislation, and about a hundred and sixty-nine letters have to drop to everybody in that faculty area. So that will take a few days, but thirty days within some time.
Well, have it for this, uh, why don't we do it, give it a little more time, like put it on to the twenty twenty-fifth of March, like a Monday, Monday be any problem for anybody? Twenty-fifth is a Monday, that gives a little more time to get this out. Alright. Six or seven?
Five, three, or six?
Six, thirty.
We'll make sure that people live in the area that, that work, have time to get here.
Well, we might make it at least a little earlier than six.
Six thirty it is?
Six thirty sounds fine. So we'll set it for the twenty-fifth of March at six thirty for the public hearing.
You also need a motion to request a draft of the second.
I gave a motion, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Alright. And we'll end that at six forty-eight? Just one more question.
Alright, six forty-eight, we'll call the Health and Safety Committee to order the first item on our agenda, the Traffic Control Map Amendment, this was given to us Tuesday night in the large packet, tonight we just have the letter. Put out a date of January twenty-one to City Bucyrus, attention Health and Safety Committee, dear Health and Safety Committee, City Bucyrus Traffic Commission, we'd like to recommend an amendment to the Traffic Control Map that repeals a portion of ordinance number nineteen dash two thousand seventeen. Number one, to remove the additional four parking spaces on the west side of the courthouse, North Wall Street. The history of these traffic commission recommendations are attached. She went through and, went through the history, through the traffic commission, when it was requested, when it went through the trial, and so on and so forth. So, is there any additional information you can give at this point? I think we've already discussed it. So I'll entertain a motion to amend the Traffic Control Map as noted here in the letter. So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same, motion passing.
Alright, our next item is rental property regulations. Mr. Radoff, is that you or is that going to be Mr. Hershey?
Uh, it's gonna be both, thank you. Uh, I'll start off real quickly, we had, we had a, a near tragic situation here about a couple of weeks ago with carbon monoxide poisoning. At that time, it came to light that we have no requirement for carbon monoxide detection within our, you know, our carbon maintenance code or any of our rental properties. Coincidentally, in looking at some other cities and what they had done, we had identified some carbon monoxide legislation. And also researching that, and Mr. Hershey has provided to you guys a, a draft of some brand new fire, Ohio Fire Code regulations that are in effect as of January first, two thousand nineteen. They also have some retroactive, or I guess you'd call retrofitting provisions requiring carbon monoxide detectors in English residences. So you may be somewhat unsure on adopting this kind of legislation. We want to make sure it complies with what the state code is, but it is something that's important. Mr. Hershey going to give some input on this and the Fire Code.
Yeah, I apologize for not having more handouts, if I, if you mind if I just walk in my handies. I'll get sent through the, the head there, I'll give you, I have that copy for you and then for everybody else.
I can.
Get one of the charts.
If you'd like, I can send this email to everybody.
That'd be great.
I'll take care of it.
I'll just hand one then, a little chart to everybody here. Well, it's kind of, it, what I handed out was just a, a flow chart, if this, then that. Uh, it's kind of hard to read, so you might need a magnifying glass to see that. I know I need my glasses, so I'm good. Basically, what I got from the, from the law director this evening was a, an ordinance from another city?
Yeah, Troy, Ohio.
Okay, in, in Troy, Ohio. And just briefly, in the forty-five minutes, I had to peruse over real quick. It, it follows a lot with what the carbon monoxide detection in new and existing buildings is covered under the Ohio Fire Code. In new buildings. Uh, one of the things that I did see though is in the, in the first paragraph of what you're, what you're looking for is the, for what Troy, Ohio has, is UL codes for the detection systems. They, they're limited to a twenty thirty-four, whereas if you go into the Ohio Fire Code, there's more UL listings. So that's something that we may want to look at. And then the, the requirement in, in new construction as opposed to existing construction, because existing construction, I can have a battery operated CO detector. And there's provisions that are built into the Fire Code that state, you know, if this and, and that, that's on the chart there as opposed to new construction, which requires what I believe to be the UL code twenty thirty-four. And that's the, the hardwired ULs for new construction. Also in the Ohio Fire Code, you'll see that in, it's new construction for anything after the date of, I do believe it's, and I had it marked. Uh, two thousand fifteen? Uh, there's a date in two thousand fifteen. I apologize for not having, having that better marked. Yeah, December fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. So if a building does not have commercial power or if the building was existing building before, December fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, a battery powered CO alarm is acceptable. These, these are things that we may, we may want to, to look at and make sure that we're following the code that's in place.
I think, well, what I, if you haven't already discussed this, I think what I'd like to see is maybe you two working together to create what should be the most appropriate language for our community.
Yeah, and we, we need to incorporate some of these new, make sure we've incorporated all of the new standards from, from the Fire Code and make sure our penalty provisions kind of follow along the Fire Code. So I was looking at earlier, trying to find out what this Fire Code penalty provisions are.
And then what would, and I'm just throwing this out there, I don't know if there is an answer yet, but would we throw an extra step into the building permit process where if somebody was either doing a renovation or a new build, that you would, you would take on that burden of the inspection at that point or?
Well, the new and existing buildings, according to the Fire Code, the groups that it involves are I one, I two, I four, our occupancies and group E. Now, that doesn't really mean a lot to you unless you, you know inspections. So group I, just to, and I'll keep it short, group I is institutional groups. It's like drug assistance, halfway homes, residential boarding, childcare facilities, hospitals, nursing and mental hospitals, so forth. And group I four is daycare facilities, so that's I, right? Group R is residential groups, but residential groups are boarding homes, hotels, motels, apartment housing, boarding housing, convents, so forth. There, there's a whole list of them. Uh, what it does, what I, and then education groups is defined as by six or more persons at any one time for educational purposes through the twelfth grade. So if they have a forced air furnace, with the, the gas heating, there's provision set forth for each one of these that they have to have a CO detection installed.
Is there any talk of also adding smoke detection to, to this, or would that be something that we look at separately?
Yes, we, we have smoke detection provisions in our International Property Maintenance Code, and that kind of dovetails with the legislative question. We've talked in the past about maybe trying to work ourselves away from that International Property Maintenance Code. We have some drafts pending of legislation that simplifies that, tries to customize it for Busires and, and our needs. And those, and this and those can be provisions within that overall thing. This can be standalone carbon monoxide and smoke detectors. With respect to rental properties, I think it's probably a pretty good idea to consider both because a lot of times we're dealing with a population that's, you know, you take, when you rent a property, you're taking it as is a lot of times. So, you know, putting some bonus to have those in there is, is I think important.
That sounds like something that's probably the best way to tackle this is to have you work with him to, to come up with some, some language for us to look at?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
I, I think that's what I'd like to do. I think we need the official action at this point. I think just request you to do that and bring it back to us when you have something that you think will work for it.
Yep, definitely.
It would be great.
All right.
Much appreciated, Don.
I'm proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up is repeal replacing the billlet.
Oh, I could start this off. Robert, Jeff, have any to add? Chief Keppke approached us recently about adding part-time to dispatch, part-time dispatchers, where it gives some flexibility. It's, it's, what happens is when, when we have vacations or sick, calling sick, they tend to, police officer has to sit on the dispatch and takes an officer on the street. She was concerned about, he thinks, you know, we all agree that an officer belongs on the street. And so in response to his request, we'd like to, you know, if we have, open up a discussion. See what you guys think of that.
I think it's a marvelous idea. Especially if the chief's asked before, thinks that's something that will benefit his department or something. Well, we definitely have a retiree in two thousand twenty and probably going to lose another one probably here in the next two winters of dispatches.
Yeah. So now that you're trying to look at it and get some, get your thoughts on it.
He's going to lose a utility officer too, isn't he?
Yes. Al's retiring, maybe probably.
So we need to request for you to prepare changes or?
Yeah, um, the, is you going to propose it?
No, we have to leave.
They just want to kind of know that we're okay with it, we're doing it forward, we're working on it.
Yeah, if this, if you're okay with that, we just work on some of that, send it to you and if the proposal's.
I can, we'll pull the motion to allow them to prepare legislation for change to the billlet. Do you need a motion for that?
You, you probably could kill two birds with one stone here and do the manpower and the billlet because it's, it's the same function of adopting those, those positions. So we can, we'll repair, we'll repair two pieces of legislation for you. Propose new billlet and propose new manpower based on the administration's recommendations.
I got a motion. He made, he made a motion. I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries. So you'll bring that back to us then, kind of prepared for the future.
With that said, unless there's any other issues, come before Health and Safety. I will close that out at seven P M.
I will, I need to order at seven P M. First is material visits. This came from Service, so pretty much already discussed it. They just need our blessing as well.
So, second.
First by Kevin, second by Andy. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Um, two thousand nineteen million paid, same thing, paid to Service. Just need finances blessing as well.
So moved.
Second. Wait.
I just want to make sure that we change that amount.
With number eight being for the.
Yeah, so it actually be not to exceed six hundred thousand. We don't want it to be right, six thirty-four, we want it to be down to thirty-four, five twenty, so that's what's in our budget, is six hundred.
So that's keeping that number, line eight is.
Option. Does that actually drop the point below? Yeah, and we've got ten percent voting for continuing to not to exceed six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, not to exceed six hundred thousand. First by Kevin, second by Andy. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, moving on, um, the repeal replacement of billlet and same thing goes with the man, employee manpower. Came from the Health and Safety Committee. So we just need to.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Technically, the fire's committee doesn't need to do anything yet because you're not spending any money.
Okay.
Or you're not, you're not adjusting the budget in any way yet. So my guess is these will come back as, you didn't make a motion. Prior committee did make a motion to request them as emergency and they normally wouldn't be because they'd be coming back for first reading next time. So only until we needed to appropriate money for those part-time dispatch positions would we then need some finance.
Okay, um, the reduction, that was, um, needed an appropriation reduction in two eighty-two Victims of Crime Act, it's an advocate, personal services, in the amount of eighty dollars and seventy-eight cents to correct an error in the two thousand nineteen budget. Um, this was, the budget was passed before the last payroll, so we just need to make this appropriation reduction.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I, well recess at seven oh four P M? Do we have any color participation? Andy? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Well, you're in at seven oh four P M.